Microphone and my cameras are on. Especially in the back row, that's the sensitive place. Talking to Mr. Gagnon is the best part of meeting.
Just let you. Okay, it is six o'clock on Monday, January 6, 2025, in the great town of Lee. We're going to call our meeting to order, start with public comment. If you have public comments, please come to microphone, see your name and address, and address the board. Please leave a comment, just your minutes. Yes, Mr. Tappin?
John Tappin, 187 Stepping Stones Road. At the first public budget hearing two weeks ago, it was noted that the Library Capital Reserve Fund is incorrectly listed as Library Maintenance. The list of transfers to the Capital Reserve Funds is missing the Lee Library Building Capital Reserve Fund. It must be fiscal year 2025, which is showing is short by the $200,000 that was appropriated to that fund. But the warrant presented is a draft, but it was not identified as such. And if the articles state, quote, "The Select Board recommends this article," and yet the Select Board had not yet voted on those articles, and it still hasn't. Select Board did not make these errors. And at last minute, the Board asked for these errors to be corrected.
You asked for them, not the Board.
The Chair did ask for them.
Okay, I purposely did not change every single article back.
Two weeks later, these changes have not been made. The paper ballot, the paper over there does stamp draft. But what was published does not state that it's a draft. And what was published still incorrectly states that the Select Board recommends these articles, and yet the Select Board has not voted for it. And listing it in the agenda as a draft is not adequate. No, it is not.
But I did not put a lot of effort into making sure that people knew that this was not the official budget, because there are absolutely no dollar amounts entered in the operating budget under the Select Board. It seemed pretty obvious to me, but we can certainly adjust as... Give order to the mic.
Okay, we can take care of some of this being draft or not a draft tonight. All right, any other public comment? So we're going to open the second budget public hearing. Do you have some questions?
Would you like to start with your warrant, with the worksheet?
Well, I asked some questions, I can't open it, my solid is having itself down.
Sure, and I think I have the answers.
Yeah, go ahead.
To your questions. The first information point you inquired about was the supervisors of the checklist postage increase. And despite, as you had pointed out, that we were going to be down elections, and yet their postage had increased. I did talk to the Chairwoman of these supervisors of the checklist, and she said the number of elections don't have any bearing on the mailings the supervisors of the checklist has to do. That postage line is primarily for 30-day voter verification letters. We have more voters than we've had in prior years, and we also are looking at higher postage rates than we had in prior years. And they said pretty much all of it last year, so that was why they increased that line. The second big thing I think that was perplexing was, under solid waste, there was $6,000 listed for electricity. And in fact, that is not electricity, it is electronics.
Okay.
And it's for disposal, my understanding is it's for disposal of electronics.
Okay.
I don't know if they were... Those were the two primary monetary items I had.
Okay, would you like to...
Would you like to...
So would you want to have to show any comments?
My comments are more general, not necessarily specific. Because this last year, my operating budget got passed by 51.9%. And this year, the tax rate went up 9.1%. And at least I'm projecting this one to be, because we still haven't had any increases for salaries, probably closer to 8% at some point. People that come to vote are going to say enough's enough. So no matter what he's put in here, they can shoot down and do the default budget, which is basically this year, plus any contractual things we have. So that's my concern. And right now, we're looking at four $500,000 increase as it is, without even the salary stuff. So that's my concern. So what I'm looking through, is there something I can cut from 400,000? Not right off the top of my head. That's my concern.
Hi, John Tappin, 187 Stepping Stones Road. I'm pleased to hear Selectman Bogby say that. From 2017 through 2023, the town budget was passed with a yes vote of 63 to 68%. In March of 2024, the budget passed with only 51.3% of the vote. Of the 789 votes cast for the budget article in 2024, if just 11 of those residents had voted no instead of yes, the budget article would have failed. Compare this with the 88 vote changes that would have been required for the budget to fail in 2018, or the 95 in 2023. In the other years mentioned, the requirement was even higher. The recently set tax rate is an increase of just over 9% from the previous year. With the first bill of the year calculated at the previous rate, the residency doubled that increase from the first to the second tax bill. And I made a chart where I look back at what is the tax rate change from year to year, and what was the vote to pass the budget. And the tax rate change from the years that I first mentioned, from 2017 through 2022, ranged from slightly negative up to 3%. And that's these here. I don't have a calculation for this next year, because that was when a revaluation was done. Some people's taxes went up, some went way up, some went down. The next year, the tax rate change was slightly negative, and then way up to a tax rate increase of 8.8%. And this past year, 9.1%. And you can see that when the tax rate change was small, the approval, just a few months later after that new tax rate came out, the approval rate was fairly high, in that 63 to 68%. But when the tax rate change was way up, approval went way down. And now, even though it was not town tax rate that did it, the residents saw a 9.8% increase. So you can draw your own conclusions.
So the tax rate that you use in your thing is the overall tax rate, which includes the school?
Correct.
And it would be important to point out that the town tax rate did decrease this year.
The town tax rate did decrease. It was not because the amount of spending went down, it was because there was a very large increase in revenue. And I was quite puzzled by why the tax rate impact figures that were calculated for last year, which showed that if everything was voted for, the tax rate was going to go up. Why did it actually go down? And the reason is because of roughly $600,000 in additional revenue that was not expected when those tax rate impact figures were calculated last year. The tax rate figures that are calculated for this year, if the numbers hold, are showing that the tax rate next year would be just over $6, which is a little over 15% increase for the town tax rate. That cost would not be a full 15% overall.
So in taking a general look at this, we have a systemic problem that's not going to go away. Expenses are going up, revenue is not going up at the same rate. So of course, it gets left to the taxpayer to pay those particular increases. We've tried to see if other towns, specifically Maguire, you could do joint services with them. That's been unfruitful. So the town has a systemic problem, and it's not going to go away. So we're having a hard time getting extra revenue, so that means expenses have to be cut. Which means, basically, we don't have tons of fat in our budget. So that means some services or end or personnel have to go, because we can't keep doing this. It's not something I want to do, but we can't continue going like this.
Okay, suggestions on what that could be?
Like I said earlier, I don't have any specific suggestions at this point, it's more general. So it's something I think that we need to talk about in terms of how we move forward. Because if we can nitpick little things, that's not going to do it for us. It has to be something major, in my opinion.
The only thing that has changed with regard to the budget information I'm presenting tonight is on the warrant, there is a new warrant article from the Conservation Commission, and this is requesting revenue that was collected in the last fiscal year from sale of timber to be moved to the Conservation Fund. But that was added as a warrant article. And that was $4,321.87.
Which is currently sitting in unassigned fund balance.
Okay, so I guess the question's how do we run the report, because we still have to make a budget. So I hear what you're saying, and...
Well, I'm just one voice, what did the other tell you?
No, I agree, at some point here, someone's going to give, I just, there's nothing here.
I understand that. So then you have to start cutting personnel, or you have to start cutting services?
I think we should present a budget that doesn't do that. And if it gets voted down, then you'll cut in March. But let people decide. People say, no, we want to keep all our services and our personnel, then they vote yes in the budget.
Okay. If that's how you'd like to proceed?
I do think maybe we can cut some of the paving, but that was about the only thing I found that could be cut out of the budget.
This is a budget hearing. Does anybody in the audience have anything they'd like to say?
John Tappin, 187 Stepping Stones Road. This only helps a little. But of course, the tax rate is not just for the budget, but also for appropriations to trust and reserve funds. And Article 9 is $90,000 to the Transfer Station Equipment Capital Reserve Fund. And last year, Selectman Bogby noted that the town received $5,000 for, which was a grant toward the purchase of the Skidstair Loader at the transfer station. And he wanted that money to then be part of the appropriation. So this could be modified so that the total is 90,000, with 5,000 to come from unassigned fund balance, and 85,000 to come from taxes. I said it was tiny, but...
Are you two ready to change?
Yeah, no, I, yes, that sounds reasonable to me. Any else, any opinions?
Let's put, what, three?
Yep.
You can drop it back to the two.
Fine?
I'm sorry? All right, she dropped that to two.
Which article was that?
That was Rebecca Paving.
Yep.
Not going to be able to pave anything if you do that, so...
Anything?
And the price has gone up so much, and it's, I'm only going to be able to do the one road that we're supposed to, so...
One road is 305.
From Route 4 to the, from Route 4 to the Barrington Town Line on Old Hill slash Newtown Plains, it's one road.
One thing I'd like to do, I think we mentioned it at some point, but not in one of the hearings, I would like the salary of the DPW director combined in the Highway Department. So I'd like that line that's in Transfer Station to be zeroed out and then now put for itself in the Highway Department.
Just everything for that position in that Highway line?
Well, let's just make that up.
Is there a particular reason, or does that have to be put in?
Well, he doesn't split his time that way. If you're doing his splitting salary, then you should be charging some of his salary to Town Buildings, Community Buildings, so...
Initially, we did have it broken three ways, Town Buildings and Transfer Station.
Sounds like an affair.
It's very confusing.
Okay, I mean, sure, I...
It's not seeming to anybody, it's not constantly anybody, but...
If I'm an administrative lawyer, it would be great to have it all in one line.
I am fine with you putting it all in one line. And if paving is going to be reduced, and then he's telling us we can't pave anything, then I guess you can...
Well, why don't you do that, and do a warrant article for 100 grand, and see if it passes, and if it passes, I pave at all. If it doesn't, I figure it out. Over the past six years, we've also, I've asked for an increase every year, and it's always been cut back to the original. If I would have just gotten 20,000 more every year instead of nothing, I wouldn't even be asking for an increase this year.
So based on one of the comments you made earlier, let the people decide, leave it in there, and let them decide if they want that or not. Just redoing this, reviewing this over the weekend, that's the only real thing that I see out there. I don't think there's anything really that's, that we have control over. The other thing is, I've asked Andy, and I don't know if you have any information, about doing health insurance differently. That's one of the things, that's 600, almost, well over $600,000, retirement stuff for our employees, we have no control over, that's what it is.
Right.
The only control we have is if we have less employees, or we pay them less, or something like that. So I don't see that happening. Other than that, there's nothing really in there that's like, oh my God, why do we do this? And the department heads have been very good in terms of their increases.
The other thing you could do is cut it to 50 grand, and put 250 in a warrant. Because if I can't pave anyway, and it doesn't pass, then it is what it is. And the 50 will lead me up to buy hot top and patch and shims and stuff. And a lot of towns do warrants for their paving, and it's in their budget.
Yep.
And then if the people want to pave, they vote for it, if they don't want to pave, then they don't vote for it.
Well, also, if you consider if the default budget is what's passed, and the budget we proposes is shot down, you still will have 200,000.
Plus a little encumbrance, I do have a little bit of encumbrance, but...
So I guess, how about if we drop it from 305 to 200,000, and put in a warrant article for 105,000?
Why? Not 50 and 250?
Because if he gets 200,000, and the 105, that'll give him his 305.
Right.
Yep. Because no matter what, he's going to get 200,000. If the budget passes, he gets 200,000, the budget does pass, he gets 200,000.
If you go to default budget, it doesn't have to be split the same exactly, it wasn't fiscal year 25.
Not necessarily, but where are you going to get the money from? You're going to have to borrow from...
I would think that if the default budget doesn't pass, that we don't pave anything, that we try to keep people in services. That would be my opinion, I won't be here, so I get the... So we'll see what's to figure that out. But I mean, that would be my opinion, if the default budget is what you end up with, that you try to keep people in as much services as you can, and you cut the paving. Maybe you put off buying a new computer, that's what I would choose. My last choice would be people in services. And he says if he doesn't get 300, he only needs 50. So why would you leave 50 and then do the article?
Different tactics, I guess.
Okay, well, which way are you going to go?
Six of one, happy dozen of them.
Well, I guess it's a matter of where you're putting the power. Okay, well, then I say we do paving for 250, the article, it's only 50 in the budget.
This one.
Do you allow me?
If you're only 50 in the budget?
And forth? Yep.
And put a warrant article in for 250?
Does it happen?
John Tappin, 187 Stepping Stones Road. The tax rate depends not just on what's the budget that's passed, but also on the appropriations to trust and reserve funds. And as they're written before this new one was just added, the appropriations to trust and reserve funds is about a dollar on the tax rate, where the budget itself is about $5 on the tax rate. Although all of these say, "Select Board recommends," you have not voted for them. And in the past, I think I can remember only one case where you had a warrant article that said, "Select Board recommends," and it didn't pass, or "Select Board doesn't recommend," and it then did. So you haven't gotten to that, and that's a dollar on the tax rate in all of those. I'm not recommending that you say no on all of them.
I'm just thinking that if you have a warrant article for 105, they'd be more likely to vote for that than one for a quarter of a million.
I agree.
So...
We're very concerned about them voting for the budget period.
Well, concerned about everything, so...
I understand, but if you take the paving out of the budget, then the budget really is about people in services.
Yes.
And then people can decide if they care more about people in services, or about paving, or both.
So is there general consensus to leave the 50K and run the warrant article for 250?
Yes, for me.
Yes.
Okay, you've got two yeses.
I'll make that check.
I didn't see anything else.
I have one more question, do you want the roads that are supposed to be paved in it? So they know exactly what it's supposed to be for, you know what I mean?
Depends how many people live on that road. What do you want?
Isn't true.
Well, it's more of an informational, you could have the particular list on the voter's guide, in terms of what it is.
All right. I was going to be...
But it needs to be explained in the delivery session, what the object of that is. Because we haven't done warrant article paving for a while. So people need to be up to speed in terms of why it's been done this way, so... But yeah, if you can find Andy with those particular roads, I would agree.
Okay, anything else about the budget? The decision you're out, or are we just going to be with cost of living increases as well?
Can I ask a situation where there are town clerk, tax collector? Do you have anybody that's interested?
I am not 100% certain, but my ear to the ground leads me to believe that the police chief, the present police chief, has an interest in writing for town clerk, tax collector.
Okay.
And I have heard a little else from people interested in writing for town clerk, tax collector, or Select Board.
One thing, which probably won't want to kill it anyways, but the 250 is to ask for 15,000, not 5,000. That was in the ABC recommendation, as far as I remember. It's on page 11, in the middle.
Should be 15,000?
Yep, and I believe, I sent to Denise the breakout of what they're asking for specifically.
Are we willing to put that in for 15? Maybe will the audience like to comment on their faces? I'm reading your faces, maybe they're just saying...
So at the very least, I will change the department request to 15K. As the only line items that have actually been approved as a budget were ABC, I had to use ABC to override the numbers, and left the Select Board column blank.
I have nothing else that I want. Because it's, it's, there's certain things that are like 100, $200, $200, something like that, but it's not even worth our time. Because we're looking for hundreds of thousands of dollars, and I don't see anything for hundreds of thousands of dollars that I can use or cut.
One more pass.
Okay. How about two fifty if that's fifteen? Have we decided on moving that into their column, or no?
All I'm saying is, ABC recommended fifteen, so...
So, I'll change those two by us.
Okay, how do we, what are we thinking about salaries?
Well, I don't even have the information in terms of numbers, you gave us some information about salaries, but what is the impact on making all those particular changes? Because, I'm already concerned as it sits right now, and with that, it's like...
I had intended to bring that up under town administrator's report, and I do have some figures for you.
Can we do the warrant articles?
Yeah. Okay, so warrant article one, two...
Just so we're clear, my first reaction to this is the same as Mr. Tappins. This gives a very different opinion. And usually, I think Denise did this last year, she put draft on this. There's no draft on this. So, it gives the impression, and I know, I know. But yes, I would like those removed until we actually do vote.
Okay, for the next meeting, we will remove the approval and clearly stamp draft on this.
Okay, so, the articles, the first one that we have is four.
Yep.
And the ones are writing board and our voting. Four, obviously, is whatever the default budget is, and whatever we come up with next week for two weeks for budget. Okay, so about five.
This is the discussion that the ABC got into. To, to fund those particular things that we're anticipating going forward, we need to put three hundred thousand dollars in there. But I think, once again, we're saving for things that we cannot afford. I think, I don't know if you've asked the chief yet, in this check out, in terms of how that number is?
Yeah, and I think we've talked about it a little bit last meeting, but both the chief, and I think he had spent some time with Mr. Tappin as well, reviewing that number, and had also talked with Durham, who had, I believe it was Durham, who had most recent purchase. And those numbers did indeed seem to be accurate and a good projection.
Which, once again, at least in my opinion, we are saving for stuff that we can't afford. Because, going forward, I don't know, it's just, I, it's not sustainable, in terms of these particular numbers that we're seeing that we have to save for. So, something has to change, and I'm not sure exactly at this time what it is, but we can't keep going on like this, so...
Okay. Okay, I hear what you're saying. So, I, it sounds like you think we should either be looking at buying a smaller fire truck, or pushing it out and trying to make ours last longer?
We need to do something differently.
Okay.
And I know what we've done in the past is, whatever the fire department wants, that's what they spec, that's what they think they need. And I think we need to get to a point that maybe they don't get everything that they want, or maybe we look at a used truck. We need to explore some options. Because we can't keep putting that amount of money aside for those particular things. We've tried to explore stuff with Mat Berry. They don't seem to be interested in doing stuff with us, they express interest from Durham, in terms of during their particular service. So, I'm not sure if we explore something, maybe working with Durham, I, I don't know, but we can't keep doing this, in my opinion.
And we did have initial discussion. I talked with both the Durham town administrator and the Durham fire chief. As the D assistant town administrator, and we haven't proceeded with those discussions, but we have had a couple of discussions now. The only discussion I have had with Mat Berry was via email with their town administrator, and at the end of the season, they were gonna need some trash hauled, and wondered if we had an interest in it. It was not a real mutual sort of...
Well, we can certainly decrease it, and then tell the chief on the time buttons, he's gonna have to look at finding something cheaper. I don't know, I don't know enough about fire trucks, because I don't know if that's a good idea.
Well, I think we need to engage with the chief in terms of what the options are. We don't have to be the knowledge experts, we have people to do that. So, I think we need to engage with the fire chief and say, you know, in our opinion, this is not sustainable, we need to look at other options, and see where they can come up with.
I'd like to see what happens, as we know, next two weeks.
I can certainly...
See what you can... Okay, six.
I'm not in favor of this one.
Very well. Are we voting tonight, or are we just looking at...
To the chair, whatever she wants to do.
I have a question.
Sure.
Not related to this.
Yeah, related to this, but not to what Scott just said. Deborah Shanda, is there a group that's been put together to talk about the feasibility of sharing resources, whatever that may be? Is there, I mean, we have, you know, is there a committee, or is it just individual persons?
The select board went to the Durham Select Board.
No, not very...
Not very select board, geez. And had a conversation with them. Subsequent to that, the board has changed a little bit, so they don't seem to be very keen on the idea. Cause we talked about sharing services with them. They would be, they were looking at, the police chief was looking to retire, fire chief was looking to retire, the gentleman who does their highway department road agent was, I think he's eighty-three or eighty-four, so he's had enough. So, it was like a good opportunity.
What, what does that mean, that they're all retiring, in terms of sharing their...
It'd be a good time to transition.
People will be...
Yeah.
It would just seem to me with all the committees, et cetera, that we have, that, that would be, this would be one that should be active, and, and, you know, Barrington Brentwood, having, I mean, just go down the list, and, and if not, you know, yeah, no, I think that, I strongly, strongly suggest that we work in that direction, cause it just doesn't make sense to have one transfer station for a town of less than five thousand people. Nonsense. You know, it, it just doesn't, it doesn't add up whatsoever.
Well, that was our attempt.
I know I'm preaching to the choir, but until we have a, a group, and we're, and it's responsible to report back to the people, and to the various towns where we are, I don't think anything's gonna happen. Because I certainly wouldn't know anything, unless I had come here tonight, that, you know, you've been talking, I knew you had talked to the Mat Berry. About a year ago, actually, I think it was.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's all I actually knew.
Well, the writing on the wall, at least for me, was the same thing that I just spoke about tonight. We need to do something differently.
I agree wholeheartedly, absolutely. And it just seems like this is a, a perfect opportunity. You know, and it doesn't have to be our recycling center, you know, for instance. It could be, it could be theirs, and it doesn't really matter. Or we could do peace and they...
It actually can't be theirs.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I, just as an example, you know, maybe Barrington's got something that we could use, I don't know. But, you know, I mean, the individuals that go to this, they have to drive another five miles, it's not a big deal. Which is not for me, and we do it every week, so...
So, yeah, but there's an opportunity there, but...
But when are we gonna cement that and get a committee that's actually actively working on that?
I know.
It's a idea.
She's talking now.
That's what I heard a year ago, so, thank you.
Thanks, Deb.
Are we on to Article six now?
Um, I think so, yes, just might say about Article six.
Amber Gazowski, Lamprey Lane, library trustee. The trustees have proposed this because we're moving toward the next phase of rebuilding the ramp, and also a vestibule on the library. And this is like putting money aside for something that's gonna happen in twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven. So, we've realized, as Scott says, that we can't keep going forward. We're, we're willing to reduce this to fifty thousand dollars.
Can, Andy, you're still the chair, right?
Pardon me?
Are you still the chair?
Yes.
Can I ask you a question in terms of, there is money set aside from, in your foundation that hasn't been utilized yet, when are you gonna utilize that?
I'll let Katrina talk to about that.
She's...
I, I can, if you want me to...
Go ahead.
Come here, yeah, sure.
Yeah, okay.
So, we actually went out to an architect to get an idea of what it would cost for the next phase, which is the ramp, the, the vestibule, and a little bit of oak door landscaping, basically, just to make it cohesive. He came back with somewhere between three fifty and four hundred. We currently have, including all the foundation money, just under two. Which is why we thought that putting a hundred this year, a hundred next year, we would be able to build. If that doesn't happen, if we do fifty, maybe we're four years old. And maybe we can do something on the interim, but that's a situation, and it does include all of the foundation money.
Thank you.
John Tappin, Steppenstone Lane. Road, you... You just heard, yeah, you just heard, four hundred thousand dollars? Did you ask how big this vestibule is gonna be? Or how long this ramp is gonna be? What is that money going for?
Thank you. I'm still not in favor of our number six.
Okay. Even if they change it to fifty?
I'm in favor of number six.
Okay. Alright, let's take a look at number seven, Town Billings Capital Reserve Fund.
Does the board want me to reduce warrant article six to fifty thousand for the next meeting?
Yes, please.
I'll say no.
No, you don't?
Mr. Benson can decide.
Yes.
Yes.
Or Russia. I'll reduce that to fifty thousand going into the next meeting.
Um, would you maybe have the information of what the next phase looks like in more detail soonish?
Can answer that as well, the architects are coming with draft drawings in, at our February meeting.
Okay. Is that before or after the town meeting?
After.
It's after. The recessions, February first, yeah.
Okay. Alright. Where am I? Seven. So, the one hundred to the Town Billings Capital Reserve Fund, as recommended by the ABC. Why is this... Um, looking at the financial planning tool, it's not nearly one hundred thousand dollars, is there a reason that ABC recommended this?
They thought it to be saving, because the expenses for doing anything with the town center and or the town hall are not in that financial planning tool. They're excluded from it, that's why it's only sixteen, I think, thousand?
Yeah.
So, that's the reason why.
Okay. Do you wanna leave that at one hundred thousand, considering all of the budgetary concerns?
I'm okay with it at the moment, we'll see when we get to the end, but...
Uh, but you saw that that has a tax impact of zero, so...
Yep. Well, it's proposed to come out over the sign for dollars.
Oh, is that right?
Yep.
Never mind. Sorry, my head is pounding. Alright, Article eight, highway, department, road, and bridge.
Once again, it's the amount that the financial planning tool is projecting.
So, I guess the question is, do we, like, just like the fire truck, believe that we're gonna try to make all these purchases?
Well, these are bridges that we have to deal with, so...
So, yes?
Well, bridges cost what bridges cost, so, you have a question?
That's it, no more bridges.
No more bridges.
Mr. Tappin.
Leave the people on Leah Grove, maybe they're not very happy with it.
Sorry, no more bridges.
And with John Tappin, Steppenstone's Road. No, the hundred thousand is not what the FPT calculates. It calculates a little over two hundred thousand.
Oh, it did?
Yes, but the ABC cut it down to one hundred thousand.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, so, you're leaving it at a hundred, raise it, alright? I have no opinion as of right now. Okay. Transfer station, capital reserve fund, how about that?
We already tweaked that one already. Five thousand for the sign for the dollars, eighty-five thousand for the transaction.
But that's it, that's all?
That's the same thing, in terms of...
Um, let's see, are there any of the other ones, then, that you have a comment on?
Oh, I have comments on all of them, but I'm not gonna make it to the moment.
Oh, okay, that's not helpful.
But it's the same thing, in terms of the rest of these, I don't think there's one that's really off from what the financial planning tool said, so...
Okay.
And they're all large, excuse me, small amounts, so... Number ten is down because of the new two new trucks that Steve and his group got.
Yep.
So, solar energy in terms of a possible buyout in a few years. Twelve, the fire permanent systems. Have you made any progress with the one down on Elder House?
If, I would defer to the, I did what I needed to do, but don't know what's going on.
Okay.
No, no, it's somebody else's. I'll just say that, so, no, no...
Sounds like passing the bucks to you.
I...
I know, I know, it's the fire department. Cause they have to go inside of it or something, the chief is saying, and fix it?
Bar, he been in it, and that...
Yeah, okay.
The, I, I'm not saying anything else.
Okay.
Alrighty then. Okay, comments of the other ones, if you'd like to share?
So, in terms of the cemetery fence, they're saving, that's mostly going for the, um...
Clayhill?
Yeah, 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 up there, yeah, Clayhill.
Clayway?
Is it lane?
Clayway, Clayhill, so...
And reevaluation comes up in three years?
Reevaluation comes up next year.
Next year.
Like this later?
I'd say. Make a note on your, wait, whatever, okay, we need to look at the elderly, those exemptions, when we do that. So, we don't get caught with our pants down like we did, what, three years ago?
So, revaluation is likely to be a little bit consternatious as well. Another large appraisal form, firm has announced they're closing their doors in New Hampshire, basically leaving one to three reputable appraisal firms, one of which, the one we're with MRI, is refusing to take any bids or customers because of the load they have right now.
Already with them.
And we're already with them, so it's going to, I, I think it's quite likely to come down to two potential bidders for...
And one of those two is what we used last time, right?
No, we, we definitely do not wanna return to where we were last time, and I'm not sure that he is quoting or bidding.
Oh, good. Cause Denise, if she had to deal with him again, would probably quit.
He won't talk to Denise anymore.
Oh, that's, that's good, that's good.
Okay. Alright.
So, twenty is the same contingency thing, so... Uh, sixteen, twenty thousand for the...
Okay, I'm sorry.
And I think I spent thirteen, but the same thing, we have a liability of, what, was it a hundred and somewhat thousand, if everybody left?
Yeah.
So, and we spend about, what is it, seventeen per year, about, in terms of the pool? And if it's close, I think it's about...
We do this coming, this year and to the coming years, I think it'll be a little heavier than...
Okay.
I'll show you soon.
So, I guess the only question is, is there anything in the FTP that the department has, think we can move out? So, we can change those numbers, but it's not going to cost us much.
Not that I'm aware of, but.
Chief Spirit. Please, Mr. Andy.
Well, the biggest thing is the two trucks that Steve's group got.
Yeah.
That reduced things significantly, so.
Well, so crazy.
Yeah.
We're still looking for ramps.
And they're always looking, so they're doing their part. All right, so you need us to approve the default budget? Okay.
You have a.
Oh, yeah.
So, as far as I can tell, there's no tweaks for contracts or anything, correct?
There is none. We had nothing really contractually with the BCP because.
Okay. All right. I move to accept the default budget for fiscal year '26 as presented, which I have as $5,598,662.
Is that good?
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Then you can decide the other one.
Yeah, this one needs to be.
No, it's my head.
Looks better than mine, okay.
Okay. Okay, and I guess we motion to continue the public hearing?
Unless anybody has anything they'd like to say.
Anything else of the budget? Okay, so I move to continue the public hearing for the budget until the 20th?
No, 21st.
13th.
13th.
13th, oh, 13th.
Next Monday? Okay, I know that right now. There we go. Until the 13th?
Next week.
And our meeting after that is the 21st.
Yes. For 21st?
Move to continue if this was our second meeting?
Not yet, but maybe they will be.
Maybe they will be, maybe they will be.
Would you like to be that first?
Second. Second.
Hi, my life. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Mr. Andy, regular business.
Sure. The opening item, and I think Denise is going to correct me on this since this was initially released, but the Stateway came back and is looking to change the hours on Friday, May 16th. And I believe their initial request was to move it up to 2:00 PM, but have they gotten back this and want to use 3:00 PM? They'd like to use 3:00 PM instead. This was apparently a time graphical error on the material that they presented for the public hearing.
So, 3:00 PM still to midnight?
Right.
Okay.
Denise had made sure that they were clear that things have to end at midnight, that that's. I believe Town ordinance.
Sounds great. Comments, questions?
We don't need a public hearing for that because we're going to change, no?
We've done this, the board has done this in the past, and if you want to have a public hearing, we can. If there's some expense involved, then.
I don't know, what does the, what does the ordinance say?
That the board has the authority.
Oh, okay, all right, all right. That, it was more of a question then? All right.
Okay, all is in favor of allowing them to move the start-up time to 2:00 PM? Nope, sorry, I'm reading the thing. 3:00 PM on 5/16/25.
Seven.
Okay, any discussion? No, I mean, is that complete? All is in favor? Aye. Okay.
Okay, moving on, I included the wage classification and pay scale again. I think one of the things that I wanted to comment on, well, two pieces of information I wanted to give you. I had given the impression that the top line on the grade and step line was years of service, so that is not really the way to use a proposed wage scale. If we adopted the wage scale, if the board adopted the wage scale, I would recommend and advise the board to take the existing employees at the rates they're at and plug into here based on what they're currently being paid. These are 2.5% steps in this. If you implemented this, you'd be a little over $67,000 in wage and affiliated benefit costs moving forward in this budget.
So, you would take each part, so, for example, let's say somebody was A, grade 1, and they're currently making $12.89. So, you would assign them to be step 1. So, when you say that would increase 67,000, is that moving up to step 2 for next year?
It is.
Okay.
That would be a 2.5, a 2.5% step would be in the vicinity of $67,500. I believe it was 197, something like that.
Okay, did we figure out the police sergeant corporal thing?
I did indeed change the police corporal to scale 11 and put the sergeant at 12.
Okay. Make sure we have their ranks correct. Okay.
I included again the fire chief's recommendations. If the board has an interest in doing that, I will plug those into the wage step in track that the fire department uses, but it's going to involve a fair amount of work for the fire chief and I to do this, and if there's no interest on the board's part in shortening the schedule and adopting a seniority.
Okay.
If there is interest, we can certainly do it.
Okay, well, let's, so how do you, how do we feel about the non-fire department one?
That's the 67, that includes everything? The time limit and all that other stuff?
It does.
Okay.
And that would give a 2.5% increase?
And how do we come up between 2.5 and 2 steps? What's the?
This was the original MRI recommendation for the survey that you paid for. It is also very similar to two other towns, in fact, identical to two other towns that also paid for wage surveys.
Okay.
The numbers plugged into this wage scale are from a neighboring town in conjunction with an MRI update and two other towns that I've looked at, which I believe had also been done by MRI because they were all reverse awards.
So, walk me through, I get the grades and the steps, and you assign positions to that. The columns across the top explaining those, is that years of service, what is that?
Those would just be those steps. Those numbers represent the step. You would take the grade from the wage classification grade scale, plug them in, and then, as I would recommend to start, you take what those people are making, find their, find their step, and plug them in there, and moving forward, they would go from that.
So, the years moving forward.
Okay. So, how does this relate to the fire departments?
It doesn't. This is a completely separate animal from the fire department. The fire department is not an annual step. They, they have higher and lower step amounts, they skip years.
They also tend on call, you know, sort of.
So. So, for instance, walk me through, let's say Johnny Jones is in, he is a transfer station four person. So, he would be a 7.
He would be a 7.
So, then what would you do to get to his step? Figure out what he's working, making now?
I would take the amount that he is making now and plug him into the corresponding step and start him there.
So, fiscal year '25, he was making 2385.
Yeah.
We would assign him to step 5.
Yeah.
And then going forward, we didn't increase his step each year.
Okay.
These, these steps are annual steps, and that was the MRI model.
Okay. So, when he gets up to, or she gets up to step 13, what happens?
One of two things, you are stuck and.
Stuck.
And rely on COLA increases only moving forward. Or there is a practice also known as redlining for valued employees that get to the top, and you make exception, and the board would make that exception for them.
So, do all of these steps terminate at 13? Why 13, what's the?
That was the, the number of steps that were in the original wage classification proposal from MRI.
Okay.
And these, the model, as I understand it, is updated every two years. They're taking a look at the steps and whether they are consistent with the job market in your particular area.
So, based on position?
Right.
Okay. All right.
And I'm not sure if two years is the optimal amount, or they just want to make sure that you are coming back to them and paying a consulting fee every two years.
Interesting, interesting, all right, all right. I'm good with that.
Can I just say that I think I should be where the police chief and fire chief and town minister are and not below?
The only reason that I left this as was, was this was the MRI classification wage, and this is essentially the setup that is in a number of other towns, so.
Interesting.
But he is in the same boat, if you will, as the other three people get, isn't he?
Yep, and you can surely change that. I, I took the wage classification study, yep, that was presented, and moved forward with it.
So.
He's in the same place wage-wise, but.
So, walk me through, like, for instance, I don't think there's anybody else. Town minister, police chief, and fire chief and the DPW are salary, correct? There's nobody else, so these are, basically, these are hourly amounts.
Everybody else on the page is hourly.
Yeah, so if you've got them as 15s, there's an hourly rate down here, so what would you do, for instance?
Just still have an hourly rate.
We still calculate an hourly rate for the salary positions.
Okay.
And I think, you know, the, the board would certainly be justified if they said, hey, we want the salary positions all in the same step or the same grade.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
Yeah, so I would suggest that we move the DPW director to 15 like the other three individuals, unless the DPW director doesn't want to do that.
He just said he wants to do that.
I don't, I don't.
Actually, he said he wants to be step 16.
He's in that comfy chair, and that's where I want to be, so.
Okay, there you go. Chief, did you have any concerns with the police positions as presented?
No, looks good.
Okay. Thanks, and you guys have noted certain details as well about the phrase for.
Okay, with the existing fire department?
Wait, hold on, are we going to, are we approving this, please, scale for the non-fire department?
I'm okay with it.
Okay. So, yes, I guess, please implement that, and then implement the next steps into the budget for next week.
How important is the budget for next week?
Are we doing anything beyond the 2.5? Is there any more? Or are you just doing 2.5 pretty much increases for everybody across the board?
This one's?
For the budget for fiscal year '26. This thing gives everybody a 2.5% increase?
Yeah, it does.
Okay, but I was asking if you're doing anything additional.
Oh, no, I don't, no.
I did include the revised COLA adjustment policy recommendation. And we discussed this a little bit in the last meeting, but using several indices that are apropos to the town lead.
Okay.
And addressing. And addressing some of the board's concerns about, you know, what happens if it's negative, what happens if it's zero, and changing the language, so it's not, it's simply a recommendation, which it would be regardless of the language, but.
What is it for this year? Did you do this data for this year?
Uh. I believe, right now, the last one I did, it was like 2.8. I didn't have the December information previously, so. I can run it with, I don't know if they've released the December information yet or not.
I don't know if it's, but. Oh, yeah.
But if, if they do by the next meeting, I'll bring it up, it was running about 2.8 without the December information. Item number five, I was contacted by a Lee resident.
Wait, hold on, did we say anything about the Lee, the fire? We didn't decide about the fire.
You did not.
Okay, I don't want to skip over it because we were doing one at a time. Okay, so comments about the changes in the fire scale?
So, what's the cost for these?
I, I do not have a total cost for those yet.
Okay.
I can get together with the chief and calculate what that impact would be.
Okay.
Okay.
So, it's basically the same concept. The difference is the fire department has, if they achieve certain training credits, if you will. That's the only other difference, correct?
Well, longevity is also a difference.
Well, we haven't talked about that yet.
Longevity isn't included, but rank is included on there.
And the difference between the different steps are 10%? Simple sample?
Uh, yes, so.
Is that what they're currently giving?
The current, the current difference between steps is 2% ending up at 16% at the end of 10 years.
So, why are these calculated at 10% over two years?
I don't know. I would, I would need the, the fire chief created this, this is maybe, and I would need to inherit that.
I would suggest, or I would recommend, that that be the same step that we just approved, a 2.5%?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
The, the difference in the present fire scale is the wage, and also, it's not an annual step.
A bi-annual? Bi-annual.
It's, it's, it's annual for like the first two steps, then it becomes bi-annual, and I believe as you get towards the end, there's actually some three-year.
That's the current one. His suggestion, which is not the one that's printed here, right, is to change it to annually.
Would be to do it annually at 2.6.
So, what's printed here is the current one?
Yep.
This, here it says current wage scale, 8%, 8 steps at 2% ending at 16%. This is what we'd like to change it to, which would more match the one we just looked at for the general.
I see. Well, I would be okay with it suggested if it changes to 2.5, just like what we just approved. Because that'll keep everything the same.
Okay.
I am not interested in longevity pay at this particular time.
I think you should revisit that, though, and I think you should revisit it for everybody, not just.
Right.
Okay, I'll run numbers with 2.5 and using a, yeah, same scale. Good, good, good.
Okay. All right, sorry, Neil, continue.
Okay. I was contacted by a Lee resident who is 100% disabled veteran, who was questioning the amount that Lee uses for the tax credit for service-connected total disability. for service connected total disability. The cap in New Hampshire is four thousand dollars. Lee uses fourteen hundred. We are one of the lower ones in the county. Stratford is below us at seven hundred. And I believe that's it actually. And Stratford is below us at seven hundred. We're at fourteen hundred and everybody else is at, I'm sorry, no, fourteen hundred. Everybody else is at two thousand or above. They had some concerns, wanted to know how, who they would ask and how they would move forward to get that increase. I told them it had to be done on a warrant article and the best place to start, if they weren't going to do a petition warrant article, would be the select word. Based on information I got from the town clerk, I believe it's likely that we have either two or three people that would qualify for this.
Can they take more than one of these credits? Like can they take the, or is it like they pick whichever column is most?
No, I mean, you can, you, the seven hundred and fifty dollar credits, you have to select one. But I believe you can get the seven hundred and fifty dollar credit combined with the total disability credit. You can't get two seven hundred and fifty dollar credits.
Okay. Very special.
And just for the listening public, if there are other one hundred percent service connected total disability people, and talking to the town clerk today, I was not aware that you qualify for free vehicle registration.
Oh, that's cool.
So that's a fairly valuable benefit if you are a disabled veteran.
Okay, so we're looking at, because we did this, was it last year or the year before we raised the credit?
We, we, it was complex. We adopted the all veterans tax credit in addition to the standard and optional. There were some language changes and we increased it to seven fifty. That was two years ago.
I have no problem taking a warrant article on the thing increasing this to higher number. Question?
Yeah, I'm okay with it. I'm not interested to go to four thousand, but I could go to two thousand.
Okay.
Yeah, there were four other towns in the county around two thousand.
Alright, that's fine.
So you can put a warrant article, whatever number.
So use two thousand. Under miscellaneous, there's a few items hanging out there. And Mr. Buggy had followed up with an email requesting some information on that as well. Start with the simple ones, moving to TD Bank. The target date right now is February first. That gives us, we're hoping to finalize the audit report by January seventeenth. As soon as we close that, we would make the move to TD.
Okay.
And, and close out going forward. And Keith Pike is our new representative from TD. He's New Hampshire's municipal representative and.
What's his name again?
Keith Pike.
I know you, okay.
He's been in fairly close contact with the treasurer and myself and Taylor and Brenda Wittner from MRI. Essentially, what we're doing right now is, all the accounts have been set up, they're ready to go. The one complicated thing we've got moving forward is we have to pick a date to chop the sub-accounts for all the various funds like heritage, agriculture, that sort of thing, and ship those. Because unlike M and T, TD does specific sub-accounts for each of those groupings. Whereas with M and T, we have that all in a money market fund and attempt to divvy things up. And this will take the divvying of, of our plate and give us a much more accurate number.
So the monthly interest will be put to each of those subs?
To each of those in their own sub-account.
Correct. Like less work?
But the, the target date is February first. If we get everything dropped dead on January seventeenth, we will try to start earlier than that, but.
Okay. And the stuff that we do with the town clerk and all those other people shouldn't be, shouldn't be easier?
Most of that runs through Heartland Bank with the credit cards, that type of thing, and we can just switch that over. In fact, I know we've done some test runs with it already. Brenda, it was in today, it is in tomorrow.
And like credit cards at the transfer station?
I don't know what the status of the, it's.
We ran, we were, we got ready to put it online and do it and then the computer wasn't going to work. And then everyone else in town does it from their computer. So they make a receipt and enter it into their computer. We can't do that up there because there's no computer out there. So they would have to, so would have to get trained to do it differently and try to hopefully use the same. Card reader, so they can bring the card reader, the person, instead of going into the computer. Like if Denise has someone come rent the pavilion, she makes her receipt in the computer. We can't do that in there. So we've run into a problem. Hope has been talking to Carissa about getting trained on how to use it the right way.
She's also working with the town clerk's office on how to use it, so.
So there's a.
We have a module, but.
On the printer?
And it has a printer on it. But no one else uses it the way that we need to use it, so no one in town has been.
Doing it now.
Yeah.
We have remote capability. We've got wireless down at the little booth next to the transfer station now.
Okay.
It's just a matter of, I think you're going to have to do it and make a friend.
But the way it was currently set up is they would have to run all the way through the building, into the office, do it on the computer and then it just, it wasn't going to work.
That's crazy.
It needs to be easy and easy for the resident, but also easy for the transfer attendant to do that.
Yeah, it wasn't going to be the way that it was being used by everyone else, so we have to use it a little different.
So I will continue to ask every two weeks how that's going?
It was much more heart healthy and aerobic intense.
Wow, okay, alright.
Great.
Fair enough, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Sure, if you're helping.
Um, moving on to absiding issues. Library, I'm sorry, chief.
Oh, Ms. Lynn? Is that, I'm sorry.
Yeah. The next thing I had was library and this is in regard to deciding on building. Talked to Naomi late last week. The other attorney has finally gotten in touch with Naomi. Apparently he had some serious health problems through the end of October, November and December, but is now back on board. Both he and Naomi agree that this should be able to be mediated without going through full mediation. We are hoping to have that done by the end of the month. I am in the process of gathering information as to what remediation costs might be, so we can present them to the other side, see what, what they're willing to do. The bottom line that town council and I have discussed is if there's not some agreement by the third week of January, then we just go to court.
Okay.
With our numbers. And I, I think from the conversations the town council has had and, and what I've seen from these conversations, that the other side is more agreeable than they were previously and that we might be able to work this out.
Okay.
Without court expense or mediation expense.
Thank you for that.
Let's see what else I have.
Route four, or route one twenty-five?
Oh, yes. I haven't seen the court order yet, but Ms. Rossi is confident that it has been issued. The reason there was a delay, I explained that we had to wait and have a thirty, a thirty minute hearing just sort of out of the blue afterwards. The owners of the mobile home's son was having difficulty getting power of attorney and did not receive that until the week before that scheduled hearing. And the judge had decided to give extra time to allow him to, to weigh in, rather than exclude him before he had power of attorney. So at this point, looks like February first is the cutoff date. We can move and clean the property and lean the property for any associated costs for that removal, so.
Anything from the neighbor who might be?
I have not heard anything from the neighbor recently. He is, he's in Florida, I believe, until at least the beginning of April, so.
Well, maybe we should send Denise down to see if he's.
I don't think that's in the budget.
Say I was going to pay for it, I didn't send you to go down.
Karen, I believe, has reached out to him and they are in communication.
So all those things are progressing and?
They are progressing and February first appears to be the drop dead date.
Okay, thank you very much.
And, that was just legal notes. I don't believe I have anything else under miscellaneous at this time. If you have questions for me, I.
I will take them. Consent agenda, do you have any consent about the consent?
I have some questions, so.
Okay.
Could we postpone the vote until I can ask them and hopefully they're. First one is this poll thing. Can somebody explain to me, they want to vote a new poll? There's two.
It's already up. We get those well after they're already put up.
So why are we even seeing it?
Because they think that they have to pay taxes on it.
So did they put up two polls? What's the two, like, two circles? One's colored in, one's not.
One's what?
One's colored in and one's not.
Yeah, so if you look at the, I don't have the map on before to be able to look at it, but there's a. If you look at the top, they removed the colored in one and then set the new one next to the colored in one.
Oh.
So see up at the, at the top, there's a.
Yep.
A key, so they moved one and sent it over.
Is that not true?
No.
No, I'd say I could betray them. Okay, alright. So that's that one. Next one is this agreement. What is this for? Is this for you, Steve?
Yeah, but I thought we're supposed to ask these questions about this prior. I'm just kidding. Yes, we need diff fluid now.
Yep.
Because.
The two new trucks.
And the fire department uses diff on two of their trucks.
Okay.
We use it on both the roll off and the truck, the yellow truck I drive. So now it necessitates having.
This is the exhaust stuff, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So we're going to get a fifty-five gallon drum now instead of just buying two and a half gallon jugs. It's cheaper that way.
Okay.
So we don't pay anything for that. If we break it, we pay for it. So as long as we keep getting the diff fluid from Dennison.
Yeah.
And then if we stop, the lease would either go to the next company or they would take it back.
Okay.
But as long as we don't break it, it doesn't cost us anything.
Thank you.
If we have insurance coverage for the pump out under our.
Okay, I was just asking because I didn't know what this was.
Yeah, it's, it's. And so it's not just for the highway department, it's, the, the fire department's going to start using it too instead of.
So but, but it'll be housed over in your area?
Yeah, and they just got keys made this morning so they could, after they fuel up in Durham, they can just go unlock the door and fuel up with diff.
Okay, good, thank you. That's all my questions for the season.
Then I move to set the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
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 I do. One item that I can mention for the audience's benefit and the board's benefit, I think Denise may have emailed this, but the deputy treasurer is no longer eligible to be the deputy treasurer. And we should have a deputy treasurer. So anyone that is interested in being a deputy treasurer should contact Mr. James, our treasurer. Or you could also contact the board directly, but.
Okay, deputy treasurer.
We got on the list on the inquiry, it's getting pretty lucky. Volunteer to you.
Okay. Can you say I discussed it Friday?
You did?
Well, we just.
And we realized that we had not selected.
What did you decide? What did you decide? Because I know we talked about it.
Yeah, I didn't talk about it.
We talked about it.
We did talk about it, actually.
In September or October.
I think we did a nomination.
I think we did.
There was general discretion, I believe.
Was there a general consensus?
Maybe.
Okay, alright.
I believe it was a non-public and I don't believe there was a motion either.
Just for me, oh, okay. I did read you the other question, please, you're wondering.
Okay.
They usually ask at some point if someone reviewed it. It was preemptively striking.
Okay.
Any old business?
I don't have any old business regarding update of the digitization project. I have not brought forward a cost on that for this year's budget. It's fairly expensive. The informal numbers I've gotten have ranged from a low of sixty-seven thousand to a high of above a hundred and fifty thousand. And I would sorely love to slap everything into an electronic data file and have keyboard access to it. And I'm not comfortable bringing those numbers forward unless the board directs me to.
Is there any, have we been given grants for that?
Not that I have come across yet, but.
Okay.
Keep your eyes open.
Yep, and part of the difficulty is, one of the things that we would digitize first would be the property records. That's probably the most sought after and takes up the most space in town office. And any number of those plans and original paperwork that are in there unfold out to five or six feet wide. Or actually, former road agent used to put road notes and that sort of thing on wooden shingles that we find in the files.
Okay. Is the cost because of like hiring someone to do it or using the machine? Or both?
Those, both. The low end, I would estimate that we would need to pay between sixteen, seventy thousand dollars to get everything filed without purchasing machine. We could use the machine we have for standard office size paperwork. Typically, the process from the other towns that I've talked with, towns that have done this, they have hired the company, maybe they're hired an independent contractor or more likely they've hired the company that has bid the machinery, the equipment they're going to buy to do the initial load. Get everything that you've got into electronic files and then set you up to move forward, adding things, you know, as you do them.
Stratford County came and did some of the stuff, did they? Now not really.
They came and did very little and actually set us back in our filing more than they helped us. They unstapled, unpaperclipped, unorganized, everything in several thousand property files, scanned them.
But then did.
And told us that they, they are not responsible for putting things together and left them in piles. And we still have not received the electronic.
Still?
No.
Electronic data files, which were done over two years ago. And there've been multiple requests, the requests have gone unanswered.
Don't we pay dues to them or that was to get this?
We do, and I think that was part of the planning and zoning director's concern over the past few years, the past two in particular, about the dues. And there have been no changes that I'm aware of with regard to the land re, river pollution issue, which as of right now, I believe the primary issue is things substandard. Sewer treatment plant, New Market, had made some effort to solve their problems more than a year ago.
Alright, then we have new business.
Yes, and this would be discussion of whether you want to change the pay in lieu of vacation policy. This was brought up the last meeting. The way it sits right now, if you have more than 10 years' experience and were hired prior to 2017, you are eligible to request payment in lieu of vacation. Bringing this forward because over the past several years, you've had various people come to you and ask for exceptions, which you've granted. Having the policy and routinely granting exceptions to it don't necessarily...
Make sense?
Right. So didn't know what the boards, if the board wanted to...
Well, my issue with this has always been, we give people vacations so they can take time off from their jobs. And if they're doing this pay in lieu of, they're just still not taking off the time. So I'm in favor of getting rid of it completely, but they've had it for a while. Because vacation is so, they're taking it away from their jobs, do something else, recharge their batteries, whatever. And this doesn't allow certain people. And I know there's certain departments that have a hard time getting people off. That's something that needs to be dealt with in a different way instead of doing this.
What different way would you...
So I'm the one that requested it. So I took a week off at the end of July, beginning of August, and then I worked and I was already maxed out again for the end of December. And really take time off like that in the winter, it's not feasible.
Take two weeks off in the summertime.
It's not feasible. You fall behind too much.
Well, that's the part that we'd have to deal with, so...
Okay, but I guess in what way?
Well, I guess I would question, I don't know if this is a personal thing, so if you're willing to answer the question.
I'll answer whatever you want.
Whatever. Tell me what I want to hear. No, so what is keeping you from taking off more than a week?
There's just, we have too much going on in order for people to be gone, like, two that long.
So you can't take off, like, one week, one month and one week the next month? Something like that?
I don't wait my family that much. You said you wanted me to be honest with you.
No, 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 I appreciate the honest question.
She's not watching, I hope.
What's her number? Let's call her.
No, we're just, we're busy. We don't have time.
So, and it's not just you, it's everybody. It just doesn't, like, just, there's just not a delay for anybody to take off that much. Like, do you have too much time off for the number of hours?
No, I mean, when I, when I worked for the state, I was maxed all the time. Except we're allowed a lot more leave, but I was maxed. And pay in lieu of wasn't an option, so you either just lose, you were either, you either lost it or you just took a day, a month. But there was also a lot less going on and five more people. So it was easier.
I don't see us hiring anything new.
But the thing is, the point of him having vacation is to take time off, recharge his batteries. And I know, sorry, I'm gonna get personal here. Steve has a lot on his plate and he needs that recharging time. And the thing is, if he has to postpone something because he has to take off time, then he has to postpone something.
So you'd rather he postpone the stuff? I guess my, my concern is it's part of the benefit package. And if we're so stretched here that we're, people do not feel like they can take the time off, then I don't, I don't like that they just lose it.
Oh, I don't want them to lose it, I want them to take it.
Because my, Ben's maxed. He tried and then Peter and Warren are both maxed at 14 hours. They gain, they lose it every month. They'll take a day here or there, but that's not, 14 hours is almost two days.
I think from an administrative standpoint in looking at this, you know, my thought was, you either do something like Scott has suggested, you do away with the policy or you make, make the policy universal and adopt it rather than have a random date of 2017 and, and make an exception to it every three months.
Well, my point is, I'm looking out for the benefit of the employees of the town of Lee. If you keep working them, working them, working them and they don't get time, the opportunity to take the time off, that is not very helpful to them. It's not therapeutic, it's not helpful, and it's not healthy. That's the reason that employers give time off, so people can do something else besides stressing at work or whatever. And I think that's what I'm trying to get at. You know, they probably love the money, but if you can't take off time, there's something wrong. There's a systemic issue there. And maybe it needs more, more, you know, investigation or whatever. But I'm just fearful that we're gonna work our people so hard, they're gonna get burnt out and then they're gonna leave to go to someplace else where they can take off two weeks at a time or whatever it happens to be. And the thing is also, in terms of financial point of view, whoever does the books needs to be out for a whole cycle. And if that person, Taylor, can't take off two weeks, then we have a problem. So I don't want us to turn into, what is it, the Summersworth Housing Authority where the lady never took off time and she embezzled. And I'm not saying our people are gonna do that, but she needs to have, be able to take off time. All of you do. And maybe it needs warrants more investigation. And the thing is, that's where I'm coming from. Maybe we need to have a meeting with all the staff and just say, hey, what are your thoughts? If they say, hey, you know, I want more money, you know, and I want to be able to do this, then maybe we do that. But I'm just fearful that we're burning our people out, so...
Thanks, Steve. I, I hear what you're saying and I completely agree, they should take the time off, but I also don't want them losing it at the end of every month.
I, I don't want them to lose it either. I want them to be able to take it.
There has to be a happy medium.
Yep. So maybe, I don't know, maybe, maybe there's a conversation that needs to be had with the employees because they're the ones that are affected and with the board at some particular time.
Well, there is a policy in place also, it's like you said, the time, the having, the 10 years, that you have to be here 10 years and hired before 2017. So there are quite a few people that don't fall within that.
That's what caught my attention about it is, we've got the policy, there are very few people that actually qualify to take payment in lieu of vacation right now and we keep making exceptions to it for people that don't qualify under our policy and it doesn't make sense to have the policy if we're gonna pretty much waive it whenever the waiver is requested.
I think, at least the ones I remember, they were waived for a particular reason. One of them was a police officer because he, he's covering.
Several of our officers, yeah.
So I can see that. But yeah, on an ongoing basis to say every single year, I want pay in lieu of, that speaks to some systemic issue we have in terms of allowing people to take time off, so, but yeah. Thoughts?
I think that you're right, people should be able to take vacation time, but if for some reason they can't, everybody should be eligible to ask for it. My concern is that this policy only applies to a small amount of people or the people who are willing to ask for an exception. That's my issue, is it doesn't apply equally to everybody. So I want it to apply equally to everybody. Yes, people should be able to take time off and they should take the time off, but it shouldn't just be whoever's willing to put in the form that we give it them the exception.
So would, would you change the policy so that anybody can request it? The thing that I wouldn't want, not want is Johnny Jones comes every single year and he wants another week, another week, another week. I wouldn't want that to happen. I want somebody with the ability, just like the chief Dronsfield brought, that one of his staff members couldn't take time and he was gonna lose it and that's why we give the exception. I'd be amenable to something like that, but I wouldn't want somebody every single year coming to say, hey, I want my money because I just couldn't take time off. Well, then there's some problem, there's a problem. And that's something that they're gonna have to work with, with a department head and or if it's a department head to work with us so they can do that.
Okay. So how do we do?
Well, if you kick it down the road, then you won't have to deal with it at all.
Okay, cool.
So, but I don't know, maybe, maybe it's a meeting with, ask the employees, you know, if they have any thoughts on it. And maybe we say, you know, we're thinking about changing this. Anybody can request it, but you can't request it year after year because you can't take time off if you have some particular reason, you know. I'd be amenable to something like that. I just don't, I just don't want people to say, okay, I need, I want the money and I'm gonna take off time because that brings people that way.
Would you might be able to rewrite the policy to make it more of a request, not a specific policy with 10 years and 2017 and some of the other...
And that would be, that would be my, that would be my...
Okay, so why don't you write up something?
Yeah, they all have, it always has to go to this level. But if you take it that other...
We can take out some of the gobbledygook that's in there. Because essentially this policy applies to three or four people right now.
Just, just so that if, if you want to pass it by people in terms of after we take a look at it and just say, what are your thoughts about this?
We'll discuss it in the hallway tomorrow.
Okay, sounds great.
By the water cooler or by the coffee or...
Okay, anything else for new business then? So I motion to move in a non-public session, New Hampshire RFA 91-813, row number two, A and C.
Second.
Mr. Buggie?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
And Hopper? Yes.
John, 10 years, 10 years I've been doing this and we've never taken that line out of the articles.
It's always said...
It's always been there.
No, it has never said that the select board approves. It says, "Select board approves slash does not approve."
Always been, has been.
Approves slash does not approve for the draft.
Maybe years ago, but it hasn't been that way.
Oh, absolutely it has been.
Perhaps once we got Andy, things fell apart. But when Denise was doing it, I mean, sorry, when Julie was doing it, the draft always said, "Approves slash does not approve."
Okay.
And that way, people know that there's supposed to be a recommendation for or against. But in the draft, you of course don't know what it is yet. And that's what it should say because if you have that document scandal on you, if you just download that attachment from the agenda, it looks like they've already approved these things, but they haven't. And that's why in the past, all the draft versions said, "Approved slash does not approve," or "Recommends does not recommend."
Recommends, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, now I don't know what to question, to speak about.
Sometimes people are confused by that, but it's easy to explain, well, they haven't voted yet. I think that's the way it should be because that points out that...
Not taken out completely.
That there will be, that there will be a vote, but it's undetermined yet.
Yeah, not, not take it out, but it's actually adding in instead of saying recommends. It's does, does not. And that way, people know that the select board are deliberating on this. Otherwise, when did that, not that people show up at meetings, obviously, but we might say, well, when did that happen? So it's actually, it's not a removal, it's an addition of that does, does not recommend. But that's definitely been a regular part of...
I don't know when it fell off then. I'll look at that. Yeah. Yeah. After the, the conditions. Did we get the conditions?
Yeah.
Over the range of 300, 400, 500, 600, that's on the rule.
I thought it definitely did take...
Bye. Bye.
Why you have it? Oh, well, my, they're from out here, so whatever. Because Monday is a holiday.
Yep. Martin Luther King Day or Civil Rights Day, depending on...
Awesome. Okay, all right. Motion to seal the minutes through Melick.
Second.
Mr. Bybee?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Ms. Helfer, yes. Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Ooh, wait a minute.
No, you have something else?
I have an announcement.
Okay.
I have an announcement. On the February 1st meeting, I have to work. So I will not be there yet again.
For the February 1st deliberative session, you have to work?
Yes, I have to work that weekend.
How is that possible?
I'll talk to my boss. That's a true weekend at the base, so I have to be there.
Wow.
So Denise, can you find like a little cut out of me and just put it in the chair so it looks like I'm actually there?
Dress up the police chief and fire chief.
Yeah, but they're not as obnoxious as I am, so...
Give them free rein to express all the things I don't express.
Also, we're going to talk about the volunteer year next time.
I might have seen you mean on the 20th, not on the 13th.
It's what?
The, do you want to, well, the 20th or the 13th?
21st.
21st, sorry. The 13th or the 21st, it doesn't matter. Okay, here we go.
It's not like we're on time or late as it is.
Yep, I know.
Yes. Now your motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Falls in favor?
Aye.
Did you want to sign them?
Why didn't you say that?